Ladies and gentlemen, quiet on the floor, please. Quiet on the floor, please. Council members, please take your seats. Yes, that would be you. Ha ha. Ladies and gentlemen, can I have your attention, please? At this time, please place all electronic devices, all electronic devices to vibrate. Council members, could we please take a seat, please? You're about to begin. Quiet on the floor, please. Quiet on the floor, please. Madam Majority Leader.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of November 25, 2025. I am Majority Leader Amanda Farias, and I'd like to thank you for joining us. If you would like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website. On behalf of the body, I welcome the members of the public who have joined us today. During stated meetings, only members of the council may speak. Members of the public shall remain silent. If you wish to express your support of any remarks, you may make the silent approval gesture. I want to remind my colleagues that decorum is to be respected at all times. Insulting each other is not appropriate. All remarks are to be addressed to the chair, and members shall not speak unless recognized by the chair. It is essential that even if we disagree, we treat each other with respect.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call.
Abreu.
Present.
Aviles. Ayala.
Here.
Quiet on the floor, please. Banks.
Here.
Botcher. Brannan.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers. Caban.
Present.
Carr. De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Present.
Felder.
Here.
Felice. Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Marmarato.
Present.
Marte.
Here.
Mealy.
Present.
Menon.
Here.
Morano. Moya.
Here.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse.
Present.
Jose. Palladino. Powers.
Here.
Wrestler.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Schulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Vernikov. Williams.
Present.
One. Councilmember One.
Present.
Juang.
Here.
Ariola.
Present.
Farias.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Gennaro here.
Councilmember Gennaro.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Deacon Pedro O'Brien from Lady of Lourdes Church, which is located at 472 West 142nd Street in Manhattan.
Oh, I'm talking into my cellphone. So, um, yeah. Amado padre Dios, Dios unipotente, hazte presente en este lugar. Permite que este mes sea de paz y unidad. Bendice a cada representante y a quienes los asisten. Bendice a sus esfuerzos por mejorar la vida de quienes representan. Que trabajen por el bienestar de su comunidad y de la ciudad de Nueva York. Que esta ciudad, que todos representamos y que tanto amamos, siga siendo un lugar de esperanza y oportunidades. Que Dios bendiga sus sinceros esfuerzos por hacer de esta ciudad un lugar de oportunidades y compañerismo. Amado Dios, bendice a la ciudad de Nueva York y a sus representantes. Amén. Mi love father, American, be present in this place. May this month be one of peace and unity. Bless each representative and those who assist them. Bless their efforts to improve the life of those they represent. May they work for the well-being of their community and the city of New York. May this city, in which we all represent and which we love so much, continue to be a place of hope and opportunity. May God bless their sincere efforts to make this city a place of opportunity and fellowship. Be love God, bless the city of New York and its representative. Amen.
Just a reminder to folks to silence your cellphones while in the chamber. Thank you. We would now ask Councilmember Carmen De La Rosa to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Deacon Pedro O'Brien serves faithfully at Our Lady of Lourdes Church, shared by the communities of Councilmembers Shana Abreu and I. Starting as a member of the parish for 15 years and later as a deacon for the last 26 years. A graduate of Brandeis High School, he continued his academic journey at the New School before depending, deepening his spiritual and pastoral education through the Instituto Pastoral de la Ciudad de Nueva York. He remains committed to a lifelong learning and is currently pursuing his studies at the Instituto Bíblico de Israel. An active participant in the cultural and spiritual life of New York, Deacon Pedro is a proud member of the Association of Musicos y Predicadores, the Brotherhood of the Archdiocese of New York, and the Movimiento de cursillitas de Cristiandad de la Ciudad de Nueva York. Through these affiliations, he continues to uplift communities with his faith, leadership, and dedication to service. We thank you, Deacon Pedro O'Brien, for being here today. And thank you, Majority Leader. I would, I would like to thank the deacon for being here and make the motion for unanimous consent to spread the invocation in full upon the record.
Thank you. I now make a motion that the minutes of the stated meetings of November 12 be adopted as printed. Messages and paper from the mayor?
M197 through M204, mayoral appointments.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
M205, Department of Finance assessments.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
Ms. 206 and 207, budget modifications.
Finance.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
M208.
Thank you. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's land use call-up.
Abreu.
Aye.
Aviles. Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher. Brannan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Yes, yes.
Brooks Powers. Caban. Carr. De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Felder.
Aye.
Felice. Gennaro. Councilmember Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Thank you. Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Thank you. Holden.
Aye.
Thank you. Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marmarato.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye.
Morano.
Aye.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
Aye.
Jose. Palladino.
Aye.
Powers.
Aye.
Wrestler. Riley.
Aye.
Salam.
I vote aye.
Salamanca.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Sanchez.
Aye.
Thank you. Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Vernikov.
Aye.
Williams.
I vote aye.
One.
Aye.
Juang.
Aye.
Aviles. Botcher. Brooks Powers.
Aye.
Caban.
Aye.
Thank you. Carr.
Aye.
Felice. Gennaro.
I vote aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Gennaro. Ariola.
I vote aye.
Farias.
I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
Aye.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of 46 in the affirmative and zero in the negative. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you very much, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. I want to begin by acknowledging the death of two New Yorkers who died on the job in recent weeks. Juan Carlos Montoya Hernández and Burm Havoli. All workers deserve to be and feel safe in their workplace, and my thoughts are with their colleagues, families, and loved ones during this difficult time. I also want to acknowledge the lives of several New Yorkers who died this month in fatal fires. On November 9th, we lost an 88-year-old man in his home in the Bronx. On the 12th, a 74-year-old woman died in her longtime home in Yorkville. On the 13th, an 89-year-old Robert Germain died in his home in Auburndale. On the 15th, another fire took the life of a New Yorker and injured two firefighters on Roosevelt Island. That same evening, an 86-year-old woman died in her home at NYCHA's Queensbridge South Houses. On November 18th, 90-year-old Allison Johnson died in her home in Morrisania. And on November 23rd, 95-year-old Joyce Buncombe died in her home in St. Albans, while her 68-year-old daughter Paula and her six-year-old great-granddaughter Ilani remain in critical condition. I am truly heartbroken by the death of these seniors and New Yorkers. All of us should be safe in our homes, and our prayers are with their families, loved ones, and communities now navigating their immense losses. I want to remind all New Yorkers to review your fire safety plans. Know where the exits are in your building, and please keep them clear. Especially as we enter the colder winter months, remember to keep space heaters at least three feet away from combustible material. Never use extension cords for large appliances like space heaters because they can overheat. Property owners are legally required to provide heat and hot water to tenants. If they're unresponsive, please register a complaint by calling 311. As we celebrate Thanksgiving this week, I hope everyone has a happy and safe holiday spent with your loved ones. I'm thankful for all of you and the hard work that you and your teams do every day to serve your constituents and the people of this city. I'm also thankful that my granddaughter Zoe is our youngest legislator and chambers with us today. Welcome, Zo-Zo. And Zoe, don't forget to shop small with Nona on Small Business Saturday and donate to your favorite charities on Giving Tuesday. Finally, please join me in wishing a happy belated birthday to Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, whose birthday was on the 21st. Now, let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land use items. 5502 Flatlands Avenue rezoning will facilitate the development of a new five-story mixed-use building in Councilmember Narcisse's district. The council is modifying this application from an R6A district to an R6B district and requiring MIH Option 3 for deep affordability. 699 through 703 Lexington Avenue rezoning will facilitate the development of a new six-story building in Councilmember Jose's district that will provide approximately 85 transitional shelter units and community facility office space for Providence House. The council is modifying the application to strike MIH Option 2 and add MIH Option 3. 1551 Broadway, mid-signage text amendment and special permit will modify signage regulations for small lots in the Theater District and Councilmember Botcher's district in order to facilitate the replacement of three existing signs at the corner of West 46th Street and Broadway. New York City Health and Hospitals, Lincoln Hospital, an application to approve a ground lease for an existing three-story building to facilitate development of a community center run by New York City Health and Hospitals and Deputy Speaker Ayala's district. Praise Tabernacle will facilitate the conveyance of a small HPD-owned lot to Praise Tabernacle Church, a long overdue project in my own district. Landmark designations of five properties in Manhattan's Garment District, located within the districts of Councilmembers Botcher and Powers, Bar Bay Building, 29th Street Towers, Fashion Tower, Fur Craft Building, and Left Court Clothing Center. Next, we'll vote on the following finance item. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannan, approving the new designation and changes in the designation of certain organizations to receive funding in the expense budget. Next, the council will vote to disapprove the following mayoral appointments. Dr. Mitch Katz to the New York City Board of Health and Dr. David Chalksky to the New York City Board of Health. Next, we'll vote on the following resolutions. Resolution 889, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon, would require New York City's commitment to affirm and defend continued access for reproductive rights. We thank our staff member Katie Salina. Resolution 1049, sponsored by Councilmember Pirina Sanchez, calls on the United States Congress to introduce and pass, and the president to sign, legislation to incorporate mental wellness training within OSHA 10 and OSHA 30 training. We thank our staff member Justin Campos. Resolution 736, sponsored by Councilmember Tiffany Caban, calls on the New York State Legislature to introduce and pass, and the governor to sign, legislation to increase funding for assertive community treatment teams. Thank you, staff members Joshua Newman and Chloe Rivera. Resolution 106A, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass, and the governor to sign, S3563A2367, to expand eligibility for the DRE program to additional qualifying members. Thank you, staff member Chloe Rivera. Resolution 985, sponsored by myself, calls on the New York State Assembly to pass, and the governor to sign, S2534A7851, which retroactively freezes the rent at which a SCREE or DRE enrollee pays at the level it was when they first became eligible. Thank you once again to our staff members Joshua Newman and Chloe Rivera. And Resolution 850, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, calls on the United States Congress to pass, and the president to sign, legislation that would expand Medicare to include long-term services and supports for seniors and individuals with disabilities. Thank you again, Manure Butt and Chloe Rivera. Today, we'll vote on the following legislation. Introduction 1049A, sponsored by Majority Whip Silvina Brooks Powers, would require sellers of petroleum products for use in motor vehicles or motorboats to disclose preauthorization holds. Thank you to our staff member Sarah Swain. Introduction 163A, sponsored by Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, would require the mayor to establish accessibility guidelines for printed documents created by an agency. Introduction 1004, sponsored by Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse, would require the mayor's office for people with disabilities to publish on its website a list of wheelchair repair providers. Thank you to our staff member Sarah Suter. Introduction 1235A, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would require the Department of Records and Information Services to create and maintain a centralized portal for Freedom of Information Law requests. Thank you, staff member Irene Byhavski. Introduction 1075A, sponsored by Majority Leader Amanda Farias, would require borough presidents in consultation with the Civic Engagement Commission and DCAST to create training materials on the legislative process and rules of parliamentary procedure. Introduction 441A, sponsored by Councilmember Althea Stevens, would require the New York City Department of Education to provide voter registration forms and materials on voter methods and accessibility options to improve young adults' access to voter registration materials. Thank you to our staff members Johari Frazier and Erica Coit. Introduction 691A, sponsored by Councilmember Pharoah Lewis, would require the DOE to solicit feedback from high school students about their experiences with STEM education and report on the offerings and enrollment of STEM classes. Introduction 1216A, sponsored by Councilmember Linda Lee and Councilmember Shaheena Hanif, would require the office to end gender-based violence to provide hair, nail, and skincare salons with posters containing information about gender-based violence solutions available in the city. Thank you to our staff members Julia Goldsmith-Pinkham. Introduction 828A, also sponsored by Councilmember Lewis, would require DCAST to provide promotional materials to CUNY students and recent graduates relating to careers in civil service, and introduction on how to apply. And introduction 829A, also sponsored by Councilmember Lewis, would require DCAST to create and advising and advertising campaign to promote civil service examinations. Thank you to our staff member Ree Ree A. Ogusawara. Introduction 1241A, sponsored by Councilmember Sandy Nurse, would require the Department of Correction to produce a biannual report on the 6A Work Release Program disaggregated by relevant demographic characteristics. Thank you to our staff members Natalie Melzer and Jeremy Whiteman. Introduction 199A, sponsored by Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, would establish an Office of Algorithmic Accountability. Introduction 926A, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon, would require the Office of Algorithmic Accountability to establish basic compliance standards when developing, procuring, deploying, and using public impacting artificial intelligence. Introduction 1024A, also sponsored by Councilmember Gutierrez, would require this office to publish a list of all AI systems for which it has conducted a pre-deployment assessment. Thank you to our staff member Irene Byhavski. And introduction 1297A, sponsored by Majority Whip Silvina Brooks Powers, would create a civil cause of action for crimes of violence motivated by gender that occurred prior to January 9th, 2022. It would also allow such claims against any party who committed, directed, enabled, participated, or conspired in the commission of a crime of violence motivated by gender to bring a civil claim against that party. Claims under this law must commence within 18 months of the effective date of the local law. Any person who brought a claim between March 1st, 2023, and March 1st, 2025, that meets the requirements of a cause of action under this law may amend or refile their claim to add a cause of action under this section. Thank you to our staff members Johari Frazier, Juanita John, Julia Goldsmith-Pinkham, Sarah List, Sahar Moazami, and Smita Deshmuk. Thank you for your attention. Now, I turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders, and I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Brewer, followed by Stevens, then Majority Whip Brooks Powers.
Thank you very much. I'm discussing Intro 1235A, which is known as the FOIL bill. I might even call it the Jeff Colton Bill. And this legislation overhauls the city's Freedom of Information Law, which is called FOIL, request system. People who file FOILs can wait months, maybe years, for city agencies to provide their records. This bill creates a single citywide portal to submit and track FOIL requests, and I certainly want to thank Pauline Tool, who's a commissioner of Doris. They have one. I just hope that this bill will enhance it because it does need to have more agencies being responsive. It lets users see every step of their request as it happens, acknowledgement, deadlines, extensions, decisions, appeals, and record releases. It makes all release records searchable and available. It requires the city to create performance standards and publish statistics on FOIL requests, and there are other provisions that make FOILs simpler, more transparent, and more accessible. I want to say that obviously this portal does exist. It's probably the best in the country, but agencies do not respond in a timely manner and use it. I want to thank Rachel Faust from Maria Van Alven, she's been phenomenal. Irene Budzuski, Audrey Sun, Brad Reed from the City Council Legislative Division, Sam Goldsmith for my office, and the thank you to the 33 co-sponsors and to Councilmember Gutierrez who got it out of committee. Thank you very much.
Recognizing Councilmember Stevens.
Good afternoon. Today I raise to speak on an important introduction of 441A, the Youth, the Young Adult Voter Registration Act, legislation that ensures young people are not only seen but empowered as full participants in our democracy. This bill requires that the Department of Education provide every high school senior with a code voter registration form, voting material, and accessibility information throughout the school year, not just, not just at graduation, but throughout the school year. It sounds simple, but it's, it is very transformative because what we are really doing is moving the barriers that has kept too many young people, especially black and brown young people in low, in low-income communities on the sideline of civic life. And colleagues, I want us to be honest with this movement, this moment we're living in. Across the country, we've witnessed a coordination effort to chip away at voting rights, to silence certain communities, and to make it harder, not easier, for people to participate in the democracy process. We're seeking, we're seeing books banned, curriculum rolled back, and policies that push our young people further away from the civic engagement rather than inviting them in. Intro 441, in my perspective, is saying something very loud and clear. Not in New York, not our young people, not the communities that we fought so hard to be heard. This legislation may not trend online or demand headlines, but it will do something far more important. It will create informed voters, engage residents, and generations that understand their power. To all those future voters, politicians, on any level, it's not a waste of time. Your voice matters. Your vote matters. Your, your strength is in our numbers. And thank you.
Recognizing Majority Whip Brooks Powers, followed by Councilmembers Dinowitz, Narcisse, and Menon.
Thank you and good afternoon. Today, the council takes decisive action to protect New Yorkers in two critical ways. First, with the passage of Intro 1297, we restore the full strength of the Gender-Motivated Violence Act. After a court ruling put hundreds of survivor cases in jeopardy, we had a responsibility to act. This legislation reopens the look-back window and makes clear that institutions that enable abuse must be held accountable. Survivors should never lose their chance at justice because of a loophole. We are also passing Intro 1049, which addresses a quiet but harmful practice at gas stations across the city. Large preauthorization holds, sometimes over $100, can drain a family's account for days. For those using benefit cards, these holds can mean losing assistance they cannot replace. This bill requires clear disclosure so New Yorkers are not caught off guard. These bills address very different challenges, but they share a common purpose: protecting the people we serve and ensuring fairness for every New Yorker. I urge my colleagues' support, and I'm proud to see both measures move forward today. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Dinowitz.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Every day...
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Every day, New Yorkers rely on information produced by our city: a tenants' rights flyer, a school registration form, a public health notice, or a benefits application printed from a website. These documents are often the front door to city services. And we say these documents are designed for New Yorkers, but, you know, not really all New Yorkers. For too many people, people with disabilities, individuals with low vision, seniors, the way our materials are formatted can make vital information difficult or even impossible to use. Intro 163 addresses a problem that is both widespread and solvable. The bill requires the mayor, or the mayors designated, to establish official guidelines for the accessibility of any printed document created by an agency or related to an agency program or activity. The guidelines must include standards for formatting, visual design, and readability. And where practicable, any printed document an agency creates for public dissemination must comply with these guidelines. And these guidelines are not complicated, but they're powerful. They ensure consistent readability, appropriate font sizes, limits on overly stylized serif fonts, clear contrast standards, logical formatting, and layouts that don't get lost when printed on different devices or at different scales. In plain terms, they guarantee that documents produced by the city of New York are easy to read, easy to follow, and accessible to people who need them. When a, when a parent can't read a school notice, when a senior can't decipher a housing application, when a constituent can't understand a health alert, those are not small inconveniences. They're barriers to participation in our city and barriers to safety. 163 is about removing those barriers. It's about respecting the reality of how New Yorkers engage with governments and meeting them where they are. I want to thank disability rights leaders, seniors, and community groups who continually push for access and equal opportunity. I want to thank Sarah Suter and Sarah Liss, and Councilmember Linda Lee, my co-prime sponsor, and of course, Speaker Adrian Adams, whom I'm deeply grateful for, for her leadership and unwavering commitment to building a government that meets residents where they are.
Councilmember, your time has expired.
I encourage everyone to vote for 163. Thank you, Madam Majority Leader.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Narcisse.
Sorry. Thank you much, Majority Leader, and thank you, Madam Speaker. Today, this council is voting on 100, I mean, 1004A, a bill that addresses a barrier faced by New Yorkers who rely on wheelchairs. When a wheelchair breaks, it is a small, it is, it is a small inconvenience, but for those that use it, it's, it's a lives-changing. It cannot go without it. It came in missing work, missing medical appointments, missing graduation, or being unable to leave the home. Too many people are left searching for repair providers with no clear information and no reliable place to turn. This legislation charges that, changes that. Intro 1004A requires the mayor's office for people with disabilities to maintain a clear, accessible citywide list of wheelchair repair providers, including contact information, hours insurance accepted, and ways to connect with the services that help people locate their repair. It is a simple tool, but one that can prevent days of delay and unnecessary hardship. I take this issue personally. Before I became a council member, I owned and operated a DME business and sold wheelchairs. I saw firsthand how a broken part can disrupt a person's entire life and how families often struggle to find help quickly. This bill is about giving people straightforward information so they can stay mobile, safe, and independent. I want to thank the speaker, of course, my colleagues, and all the legislative team body that came and helped with this entire thing, and all the advocates, and of course, my staff. And I want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this. And with that, I will say vote aye, everyone. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Menon.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Artificial intelligence is increasingly relied upon for city operations with certain agencies, such as the Department of Buildings and the Department of Education and others. We have a responsibility as a city to ensure that the government is utilizing this technology in a fair, transparent, and accountable way to truly serve New Yorkers' best interests. My legislation, Intro 926, creates clear responsible standards for AI use across city agencies to ensure fairness, safeguard privacy, and increase transparency, transparency in government technology. The bill is part of a package of legislation championed by Councilmember Gutierrez as a Guard Act that will create an Office of Algorithmic Accountability to review such standards every two years, and I really want to thank and congratulate Councilmember Gutierrez for her bills today. Technology often outpaces policy, so being proactive is truly essential to act on behalf of New Yorkers who may be unaware of the impact of AI in city government actions. I'm proud to see this council, under the leadership of Speaker Adams, is advancing proper oversight over AI in government agencies. I also want to thank the bill drafter, Irene Bishavsky, and from my team, Jonathan Shep, Brandon Jordan, Jack LaBelle, and Mercedes Anderson. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, report of special committees?
None.
Reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor, Intros 828A and 829A, CUNY Civil Service and Civil Service Exams.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, Intro 1049A, Petroleum Products.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Criminal Justice, Intro 1241A, Work Release Program.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Preconsidered Reso 1153, Transparency Resolution.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation, Intros 441A and 1075A, Voter Registration Forms and Legislative Process Training.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU 364 and Reso 1158, Lincoln Hospital.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 415 and Reso 1159, and LU 419 and Reso 1163, Landmark Designations.
Coupled on general orders.
LU's 422 and 423, 1720, Atlantic Avenue.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197 of the New York City Charter.
LU 429 and Reso 1164, and LU 430 and Reso 1165, 1551 Broadway.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 430, 433, and Reso 1166, Praise Tabernacle.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities, and Addiction, Intros 163 and 1004A, Accessibility Guidelines, and Wheelchair Repair Providers.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections, M182 and Reso 1167, disapproving the appointment of Mitchell Katz, Board of Health.
Coupled on general orders.
M184 and Reso 1168, disapproving the appointment of Dave Chokshi, Board of Health.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Technology, Intros 199A, 926A, and 1024A, Artificial Intelligence and Algorithmic Accountability.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1235A, Freedom of Information Law Requests.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity, Intro 691A, STEM Education Reporting.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1216A, Cosmetology Establishment.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1297A, Gender Motivated Violence Protection Law.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
General Orders Calendar, LU 409 and Reso 1169 through LU 425 and Reso 1172, various resignings.
Coupled on general orders.
Resolution appointing various persons, Commission of Deeds.
Coupled on general orders, I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's General Orders Calendar.
Feliz.
Permission to vote on all land use call-ups and all items on today's agenda?
Permission granted.
I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you. Abreu.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye on all.
Butcher.
Aye.
Brannan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Brannan's here.
Thank you. Brooks-Powers.
Permission to extend my vote?
Permission granted.
So I vote aye on all, but I just wanted to be on the record with just sharing what a phenomenal professional I believe Dr. Mitch Katz is. He serves as my co-chair for the Far Rockaway Trauma Healthcare Access Task Force. I think it is egregious that he is being utilized in the way that he is for political gain, and it's unfair to him as a medical professional that he is, who I have the utmost respect for. So while I vote aye on this, this is in no way, shape, or form against the work of Dr. Katz and what he means to the city of New York. Thank you.
I vote aye on all, and just a quick shout-out to the Teamsters who are in the house today.
Carr.
Be voting no on preconsidered Resolution 1153, as well as M182 with accompanying Resolution 1167, and aye on the rest.
And just a friendly reminder to members, if you have a disclosure, to please disclose it prior to your vote.
De La Rosa.
Aye on all.
Dinowitz.
Aye on all.
Felder.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Gennaro.
I vote aye.
Apologies, Councilmember Gennaro. Could you repeat yourself, please?
I vote aye.
Thank you.
I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
I vote aye.
Holden.
Aye on all, except Reso 1153, of which I vote no.
Thank you. Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye on all.
Lewis.
I would like to disclose for the record that MTA is being funded, and my brother is associated with this entity, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Mama Rato.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of 1153, and I'd like to disclose on the record that my fabulous spouse works for the Board of Elections. Thank you.
Aye on all, and I abstain on Reso 1167 and Reso 1168.
Thank you.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye on all.
Aye on all, with the exception of preconsidered Resolution 1153, on which I vote no, and M182 and accompanying Resolution 1167, on which I abstain.
I vote aye. I vote aye.
Thank you.
Permission to extend my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Councilmember, your microphone.
I want to make it clear that my respect for Dr. Michelle Katz is unwavering. As a chair for the hospital committee, I have seen firsthand the commitment, the, you know, the strengthening of the New York City Health and Hospital. He has the compassion and the passion, yet I know is not against him. But the fact that this vote will reflect concern of my, I mean, I know this vote is reflecting the concern that we have, which I understand fully. So for that, I will abstain from, from M182 and accompanying Reso of 1167, because if it's not, if it's not the best, it's one of the best. So on that note, I will wish, I'll abstain from that. Aye for the rest.
Thank you.
I vote aye.
Osay.
I vote aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have to disclose that I teach at CUNY, and also I want to change one vote on M182, Reso 1167, and M184, Resolution 1168. I abstain. Thank you.
Thank you.
I vote, I vote all, aye on all, except preconsidered Reso 1153 and Reso 889.
Thank you. Powers.
Vote aye.
Wrestler.
I vote, I vote aye, with the exceptions of M182 and M184 and the accompanying Resos 1167, 1168, for which I abstain. And I just want to congratulate Majority Leader Farias and Councilmember Stevens for passing two great bills out of the Governmental Operations Committee. Thank you.
Aye.
Vote aye on all.
Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Sanchez.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of M182 and M184, on which I abstain, as well as on their accompanying resolutions.
Thank you.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of M182 and M184, and their accompanying resolutions, on which I abstain.
I vote aye on all, and special thanks and shout-out to Chair Wrestler, who helped, who heard my bill and passed it out of committee. Thank you so much.
Ong.
Aye on all.
Vernikov.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of preconsidered Reso 1153, on which I vote no. Thank you.
I vote aye. Oh, and disclosing for the record that I'm associated with CUNY. Thanks.
One.
Aye.
Zhuang.
Aye on all. I want to abstain on M182 and M184, and with the company resolution.
Thank you.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of Reso 1153, for which I am a no. And I'd like to disclose that my son Matthew works for the Department of Sanitation, which is being funded in this transparency resolution. Thank you. I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
Aye. zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, with the exception of Resolution 1153, which was adopted by a vote of 41 in the affirmative, seven in the negative, and zero abstentions, and M182 in Resolution 1160. ACT teams have been proven to work. They save lives, improve our public health and public safety, and support our overburdened mental healthcare systems. But ACT teams are currently unable to successfully meet the needs of New Yorkers. There are simply too few of them, and too many patients who need their care. The waitlists are too long, and the need is too dire. While the Progressive Caucus worked hard to slash those waitlists through our Crisis to Care budget initiative, this is not a problem the city can solve alone. I urge my colleagues to join me in voting for Reso 736, so that we can send a clear message to the governor and state ledge that we need full funding for data-driven, compassionate mental healthcare resources. And again, thanks for the Teamsters for being here. They've been out in the cold several stated in a row now, organizing for the Delivery Protection Act. Thank you.
Seeing no one else signed up to speak, we will now have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolutions into the record. Resolution 106A calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign Senate Bill Number 3563 and Assembly Bill Number 2367 to expand eligibility for the Disability Rent Increase Exemption Program to additional qualifying household members. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 452 calls on the United States Congress to pass and the president to sign legislation to lower the age of eligibility for older Americans ACT-supported social services and programs from 60 to 45 years for individuals living with HIV. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 736 calls on the New York State Legislature to introduce and pass and the governor to sign legislation to increase funding for assertive community treatment teams. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 850 calls on the United States Congress to pass and the president to sign legislation that would expand Medicare to include long-term services and supports for seniors and individuals with disabilities. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 889 declares New York City's commitment to affirm and defend continued access for reproductive rights. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 985 calls on the New York State Assembly to pass A 7851 and the governor to sign Senate Bill Number 2534 and Assembly Bill Number 7851, which retroactively freezes the rent at which a SCRI or DRI enrollee pays at the level it was when they first became eligible, or at the level it was two years before they entered the program, given that entrance into the program occurred more than two years after they first became eligible. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 1049 calls on the United States Congress to introduce and pass and the president to sign legislation to incorporate mental wellness training within OSHA 10 and OSHA 30 training. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion, and I'd like to first acknowledge Councilmember Brewer, followed by Morano.
Thank you very much. I just want to say that James Liu is here. He is a VAN scholar of the most incredible expertise and intelligence. He's here in the audience today, and I just want to thank him and thank the speaker for the VAN fellows. Thank you very much.
Recognizing Councilmember Morano.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Today, I have the privilege of introducing four pieces of legislation, very apropos, because my son turns four today. Each meaningful, each important, and each one the result of the kind of late-night phone calls, emails, and hallway conversations that I suspect my staff and the Legislative Division is still recovering from. But I want to highlight one in particular because it addresses a crisis that has been hiding in plain sight for far too long. The bill establishes the New York City Guardianship Reform Commission, the opening phase of what many of us have come to call Wendy's Law. And yes, I fully understand that we don't officially name bills in this chamber. Legislative Council has reminded me of that fact with the sort of patience normally reserved for kindergarten teachers. But the name speaks to the heart of why we're doing this. Many Americans first learned about abuse of guardianships because of Britney Spears. People who'd never heard the term conservatorship suddenly became legal scholars overnight. And then, of course, Wendy Williams, very public ordeal, brought even more attention to just how easily a person can lose control over their own life. I've spoken with Wendy personally, and she supports this effort 100%. She's looking forward to testifying on the bill and hopefully being in this chamber when we pass it. But this isn't a bill for celebrities. This is a bill for the thousands of New Yorkers whose names you'll never see on Page Six, seniors with no family, adults with disabilities, individuals who get swept into guardianships that can strip away their rights, their finances, and at times even their dignity, all with far too little transparency or oversight. This commission is the first step towards fixing that. Before we change the system, we need to understand exactly how it works, and more importantly, how it doesn't. Here in New York City, this commission will study current practices, identify gaps and abuses, gather real data, and work with families, advocates, and experts to recommend concrete reforms. Justice Brandeis famously said sunlight is the best disinfectant. In this case, sunlight may also be the best guardian. Thank you.
Seeing no one else signed up to speak, I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, and thank you. The stated meeting of November 25th, 2025 is here by a church.
BLAC, BLAC men, BLAC men.